All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tommy Wells. I am the chairman of the Board of Directors of the District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority. Like many people, the staff and board members at DC Water have had to adjust to virtual meetings in order to share the work we're doing with the community. I believe strongly in full transparency of our processes. At DC Water, my fellow board members are heartened to learn that DC Water staff had more than 4,000 people, 4,000 people joining the recent series of town hall meetings convened in all eight wards of the district. More residents attended this year from town hall meetings than in any other year. Moreover, DC Water staff organized-- a special online-- Okay, somebody needs to mute because I'm being heated. Okay? Uh, DC Water staff organized a special online briefing for the businesses, business community last week that was hosted by at least a half dozen economic organizations in the city. The town halls and targeted business outreach display a sincere level of participation. The spirit speaks well to the movement to engage district residents and businesses in our rate-setting process. The virus COVID-19 known as COVID-19 is a daily burden on all of us, and the D-- and DC Water is no different. I know from my conversations with our general manager that the safety of his employees and the uninterrupted service to the millions of people who rely on water and wastewater services here in the district are his top priorities. While the pandemic has impacted the global economy, we've not escaped its impact closer to home. Water consumption and revenue at DC Water is down. A result of people staying home and many of our businesses, hotels, offices, restaurants, and sports arenas are closed. As a result, DC Water brings in less revenue, and so we're working to counter that by containing costs. The needs of our system are great. We have an obligation to provide the district with reliable water and wastewater services, and unless we make critical investments in our infrastructure, we risk failure of some of our systems. Our hearing tonight is to review comments on the proposed fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 22 retail customer rates, charges, and fees, and then to make a recommendation to the full board where the board will take action on any of the changes. The board undertakes a process every two years or whenever we adjust rates. Following the hearing in September, the board will vote on this proposal of many rates for fiscal year 2021 that will start October 1, 2020 throughout the year through fiscal year 2022. Once complete, the full schedule will be posted on the DC Water website and shared broadly with the community. We have other board members joining us. I say that we've got Tony Giancola. I'm sure we've got Howard Gibbs. In fact, I cannot see everyone on my screen, so I'm going to have Ms. Manley call the role to see, A, that we have a quorum, but also so that all the board members can let you know that they're here. Ms. Manley?
Chairman Wells?
I'm here.
Crystal Brumfield?
Present.
Emile Thompson?
Present.
David Franco? Ellen Boardman?
Here.
Howard Gibbs? Anthony Giancola?
Here.
Ivan Frischberg? Jed Ross? Rushnabat?
Here.
Reverend Kendrick Carey?
Here.
And Joe Leonard?
Present.
We have a quorum, Jim.
Ms. Manley, this is David Franco. I didn't hear my name, but I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And for the record, DC Water was established by the Council of District of Columbia in 1996. It is an independent authority with a separate legal existence apart from the DC government. DC Water operates the world's largest advanced wastewater treatment plant at Blue Plains for water and sewer services to all residents, visitors, institutions, and businesses in DC. Our drinking water comes from the Potomac River. All of the proposed changes to our rates were published in the DC Register, were announced via social media and traditional media, and shared broadly with the community groups and other stakeholders, including all ANC's and, of course, with the mayor and council. I want to commend the staff at DC Water for working so hard to share these rates, the proposed rates for the general public. I want to take this moment to remind the public that among our many goals for the environment of the District of Columbia is making the Anacostia River safe once again for swamp. Reducing combined sewer overflows as part of the Clean Rivers Project is the single largest capital project and one of the most important steps in that direction. I'm proud to be involved with it. The legacy of our work protecting the district's waterways, cleaning up our waterways will be enjoyed by our children and generations to come. DC Water is a nonprofit, essentially an agency of the district government, yet independent. Unlike for-profit utilities and electric or gas fields, the money that is available to DC Water is only the amount of money that we need to carry out our mission. And in proposing the new budget to continue and, in fact, expand our customer assistance programs, we're proud of the various ways we help customers to afford their water service. Those efforts include a menu of steps responding to the pandemic, managing disconnections, restoring service, providing lenient payment plans, and partnering with Mayor Muriel Bowser and the council on a new program to cover the rearage for some of our neediest customers. Before we begin and hear from the public and DC Water's management, I'll review the ground rules for the hearing. Individuals presenting testimony have up to five minutes to speak. Representatives of organizations or group have a total of 10 minutes to address the committee. Those testifying should clearly state their name, the name of the organization they represent, if there is one, and their address. Witnesses representing organizations should give a brief description of that organization, its services, and location. We ask that everyone mute your phones until you need to speak. Please keep in mind that we are here to listen to comments pretty much only on the new rates. If there are individual questions or concerns about a particular service or billing matter, you can call the customer care department at 202-354-3600. 202-354-3600, and our staff will assist you. The board gives equal consideration and weight to written comments that will be reviewed as we receive them. Written comments can be submitted to the office of the board secretary. That's at DC Water, 5,000 Overlook Avenue, Southwest, Washington, DC 20032. So again, that's at DC Water, 5,000 Overlook Avenue, Southwest, Washington, DC 20032. You may also email your comments to lmanley@dcwater.com. L-M-A-N-L-E-Y at dcwater.com. The board will accept and consider comments until Monday, August 10 at 5:00 p.m. We will vote on the new rate structure, which I expect to happen in September. A final decision on the proposed rate increases will be made only by the members of the board who represent the District of Columbia at the board's regularly scheduled meeting. DC Water CEO David Gaddis will provide his testimony under proposed rate adjustments, and our chief financial officer, Matthew Brown, will provide the management's presentation. Then we'll hear a presentation from our independent financial consultant regarding fiscal year '21 and '22 rates. Afterward, we will hear public comments on the proposal. Individuals who are pre-registered will speak first, and time permitting, we'll hear from others here tonight who wish to testify. If you did not pre-register to speak and wish to speak tonight, please email Ms. Manley now at lmanley, or call 202-787-2330. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. Okay, so I believe, um, um, we, I think we hear from our consultants first. Is that right, Mr. Gaddis? Who speaks next?
Mr. Gaddis speaks next.
Okay, my instructions are wrong. All right, Mr. Gaddis, um, let's, um, let's move on to you. Welcome, our general manager, David Gaddis. And you're on mute.
I tried to follow your rule and stay on mute. I apologize. Good evening, and Chairman Wells, first of all, thank you very much for the introduction. And good evening to our board members and members of the community who are joining us virtually here tonight. My name is David L. Gaddis, and I have spent the past two years leading DC Water, one of the finest and the most innovative water authorities in the world. Meeting virtually is not my preference, but it is the only safe and responsible way to conduct business of the authority in the era of COVID-19. This terrible and deadly health pandemic has reverberated in every corner of the city and throughout the world. There is virtually no aspect of life that has not been touched by COVID-19. The men and women of DC Water are still maintaining the water and wastewater system for the District of Columbia, but they're doing it while practicing safe social distancing and wearing masks. We stagger our crews and minimize risk and space our vehicles out and also our workers to avoid unnecessary contact. We limit our work to emergencies, but we still have trucks responding all over the city at all times, day and night. Meanwhile, our office workers and customer service employees are primarily working from home, per the mayor's order. The work of the authority goes on uninterrupted, but we do most of it via the internet platform or phone calls or emails as well. We're not just coping with this health pandemic, but we're also finding ways to get better here at DC Water. For example, DC Water has one of the, was one of the first utilities to announce that we were offering all of our customers flexible payment plans for the duration of the pandemic, that we would turn off no water service, we would not turn off anyone's water service for anyone during the pandemic, regardless of how much money you owe us, and that we'd actually reconnect anyone for free if they did not have water. Internally, we found ways to avoid furloughs and layoffs for all of our staff. We have placed immediate freezes on hiring and restricted travel and other spending. Also, moves which, these moves have, which are, all of these moves have allowed us to shield our workers from the economic insecurity and that has arrived alongside the COVID-19 crisis. No job losses at DC Water is something that we are very, very proud of. And that is why tonight we find ourselves discussing rates for the coming fiscal year and during this virtual forum. Since March, DC Water has held more than 20 board meetings, committee meetings, and local ward town hall meetings that Chairman Wells talked about earlier on virtual platforms. While there is still a health emergency outside, inside, we are committed to working with complete transparency and in a way where the public can still observe and participate in every aspect of our deliberation. Our proposal to the board tonight would increase rates by 6.6%, less than the 8.1% increase that would have been required if we had not taken many cost-cutting steps like refinancing debt, controlling operating costs and growth, and also withdrawing $13 million from our rate stabilization fund. The 6.6% increase that I have proposed for the average household to our board was not a decision that I made lightly. This entire city and region is laboring under the economic and social impact of the pandemic and asking the 700,000 residents of the district to pay more for services this fall is not something that I relish doing. On the other hand, we literally had no other alternatives before us. The infrastructure needs of our system are far too great to punt action for a year while we climb out of the pandemic. We must make investments now in our water and sewer infrastructure so that we can still provide reliable, safe services to the people of the nation's capital. Under my proposal, the average household will pay about $7 more each month in their water bill. This includes an increase in water and sewer rates, an increase in metering fees, and a decrease in the Clean Rivers impervious area charge. We are continuing to shift a portion of the Clean Rivers cost from the impervious area charge to the sewer rate. We are doing this to allow customers to manage their bills by using less water, though we were also responding to complaints that some customers using little or no water had a high preact charge. The new formula is working well, and so is the larger program. Clean Rivers is paying huge dividends for the district's environment. Since March 2018, when the tunnel opened, our system has captured 8 billion gallons of combined sewage and wastewater along with 4 million tons of trash. Our capture rate on overflows is higher than 90%. Consider those numbers for a moment. This project is making the Anacostia and the Potomac River and, by extension, the entire Chesapeake Bay cleaner each day. As we move ahead with this process, I want to restate for a moment something that I told DC Council last week during a hearing where we discussed ways to improve the lead replacement legislation that was approved in 2018. Everything we do here at DC Water as we provide water and wastewater services to customers is going to be anchored by our commitment to our six distinct values that we will demonstrate: accountability, trust, teamwork, customer focus, safety, and well-being. I encourage you to watch us and the exciting things that we are going to do here at DC Water and here in the district. I appreciate the work of the DC Water Board of Directors and their dedication to the authority. I could not do my job well without the guidance of this board, so thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from our witnesses. Thank you, Chairman Wells.
So, next, are we going to hear from our consultants or from Mr. Brown?
From me, from Matthew Brown.
Mr. Brown first.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I get confirmation that those on the phone can see the presentation?
I can.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Brown. I'm the CFO for DC Water. Tonight is to hear from our customers, but I want to provide some information about the rate proposal. First of all--
We lost audio.
Matt, we lost audio.
You've got to take your phone.
There you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can you hear me now? Are you on mute?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay, great. I apologize. Can you--
Me, too.
Okay. So first of all, I want to make sure that anyone who's joined us tonight who's having trouble paying their bill to please reach out to us. Mr. Wells gave the customer service number. Let me give that again. It's 202-354-3600. If you join us this evening and you're having trouble paying your bill, please give us a call. Let us try to work with you to make payment arrangements. We also want to make sure that you're aware of our customer assistance programs that have been, that have been referenced this evening. There are, there are three. First, there is the CAP program, provides a monthly discount of $77 a month. There's CAP 2, which our board, as part of this proposal, has voted to make permanent. That provides customers a discount of about $50 a month for higher incomes. And then there's CAP 3. For any information about these customer assistance programs, please go to our website, dcwater.com backslash customer-assistance. There's also some emergency residential relief programs in partnership with the district. There's a new program for households that have been negatively impacted by COVID. You may receive up to $2,000 as a one-time emergency benefit, so please contact us to see if you're eligible for that benefit. There's also a program that's administered by the Greater Washington Urban League. It's funded by donations from customers, the community, DC Water employees, and many of our board members. And then there's the nonprofit relief program that provides eligible organizations with discounts on the Clean Rivers Impervious Area Charge. For any of those programs, please visit us on our, on our website. So let me talk a little bit about the rate proposal. And the rate proposal doesn't stand alone. The rate proposal allows us to spend money in the operating budget and our capital budget to make infrastructure improvements. The budget that is before the Board of Directors, that they approved in March and supported by the rates that we're here to talk to you about tonight fully funds our Clean Rivers program. It's been referenced by two speakers. It increases our investments in our water and our sewer infrastructure to help reduce the risk of failures for our customers. It increases funds for fleet purchases to make sure that our crews have the equipment that they need when they arrive on site to do work for you, our customers. It continues to ship a portion of the Clean Rivers cost from the impervious area charge to sewer volumetric rate to help bring more equity to the Clean Rivers funding formula. As I mentioned earlier, it makes that CAP 2 program permanent. It had been a pilot program. It makes the program permanent. And this proposal before us tonight extends the CAP 2 benefits, I'm sorry, the CAP benefits for the Clean Rivers Impervious Area Charge from 50% to 75%. So the benefit is increased for our CAP customers. Takes advantage of low interest rates. We're able to refinance some of our debt. That's one of the reasons why, as Mr. Gaddis mentioned, the rates, the rate increase is smaller than what we had previously forecasted. And we're withdrawing $13 million from the rate stabilization fund, applying them over the next two years for the benefit of you, our customers. Mr. Gaddis touched on this a little bit. During COVID-19, obviously, we've been impacted as a, as a utility. We've tried to focus on our customers. Mr. Gaddis mentioned that we've reconnected customers suspended late fees, partnered with district agencies, suspended placing lanes. There has been an overall decline. Residential multifamily and DC housing authority consumption is up, but the commercial, municipal, including our schools, and federal consumption is down. And that's had, that's had an impact on our cash. There's also been an increase in our enrollment payments, and then some, some negative impact on our, our other revenues, like those here, department fees and waste tolerance fees. Because of COVID, we made aggressive efforts to outreach to you, our customers. We delayed the ratemaking process to ensure that there's a time and a venue to hear from our customers. This, tonight's hearing was originally scheduled for June 10, and it's moved to tonight so that we could have this virtual meetings. Our ward town halls were also made virtual. These numbers were mentioned earlier. We're really proud of the participation that we had in the, in the town halls. We also had a business town hall on the 29th. We are always working to increase transparency. And one of the things that we've done this year, we've posted all of the materials related to the ratemaking process at dcwater.com backslash ratemaking-process. So all of the materials that our board used to discuss the proposed budgets over the months of January and February are all available to you, our customers. We've also refreshed a rate calculator. This was first introduced a year ago. Everybody's bill is different. Everyone uses a different amount of water. It may have a different meter size, a different amount of impervious area. With your bill, you can go to the rate calculator, put in information from your bill, like the information I just mentioned, and really understand the impact of this, this proposal on you. The participation in our customer assistance programs, as we anticipated during COVID, has increased. It's also increased because of some aggressive outreach that we've done. And again, if you, if you'd like to take advantage of this program, please contact us here at DC Water. CAP, we've served almost as many customers through June this year as we served all of last year. The CAP 2 participation has increased substantially, again, from some, from aggressive outreach, and CAP 3 the same. There's that new emergency release program where customers can receive up to $2,000 credit. Mentioned this before, CAP 2 has been made permanent, and the CAP program has been expanded. And then the splash program is available for one-time assistance. Again, for any information on these customer assistance programs, please visit us at dcwater.com backslash customer-assistance. So let me talk a little bit about the budget proposal and the rates that it supports. This is the operating budget sources and uses for fiscal year '21. And again, fiscal year '21 begins on October 1st. Our rate revenue is from a, from a variety of customers, anyone in the District of Columbia who uses water, residential customers, commercial customers, multifamily customers, the federal government, municipal, municipal government. There's also wholesale revenue that we receive from our regional partners because we treat their, the wastewater here at Blue Plains. Our, the, the way we spend that money is presented on the right. I'm not going to call out every pie piece, but just a couple places that I want to point out. Number one, clockwise from about 10, I'm sorry, from about 12 to 3 o'clock, our personnel. We've got 1,200 DC Water employees continuing to work, deliver services during, during COVID. They're a substantial portion of our, of our budget. Another piece of the pie I want to show you is opposite of personnel, and it's debt service. We, a growing portion of our budget pays for debt service, and that's for, to repay debt that we issue in order to build our capital program. Most people buy a house once and pay it off over 30 years. We buy the equivalent of a, of a house every single year because we're making investments in our water and our sewer infrastructure. The other places we spend our money are contractual services, so that includes things like contractors who kind of help us with our, with electric work, pump rehab, those kinds of things. We purchase our water from the Washington Aqueduct. We treat the wastewater with chemicals and supplies, and then we are one of the largest users of electricity in the District of Columbia. So there's a substantial portion of our budget, almost $28 million that pays for utilities, including electricity. On the capital budget, and so this is where we make our infrastructure investments, the sources for that mainly come from debt. I mentioned earlier that we buy the equivalent of a, of a house every year. Our revenue bonds, that lower half of the pie chart on the left, is the source for, is source of funds to pay for our, pay for the infrastructure. And then we pay back those bonds in debt service over sometimes 30 years. Some of the, some of the debt that we issued for the Clean Rivers program is paid back as long as 100 years. We spend that money improving our infrastructure. One of the biggest portions is the, the lower left-hand side, and that's the Clean Rivers program that we've talked so much about tonight. Nearly, nearly 30%, 29.1% of our infrastructure spending next year will be on the Clean Rivers program. We're also making investments in sewer, sewer lines that serve our customers, wastewater treatment at the Blue Plains plant, and, and water services that deliver clean water to your homes and businesses. So let me give you an overview of the, of the rate proposal. This rate proposal is for fiscal years '21 and '22. Fiscal year '21 begins in October, and fiscal year '22 begins a year from now in October. We advanced our cost-of-service study in order to align it with the rate proposal. Previously, the cost-of-service study was on a, on a different scheduling cycle, and we've aligned that this year so that the, the rate proposal and the cost-of-service study line up. As Mr. Gaddis said, the average household customer bill would have been, would have increased by 8.1%. We were able, through many of those actions, including refinancing our debt and withdrawing funds from the rate stabilization fund, to bring that down to 6.6% for fiscal year '21. Now, that's the average for, for, for a household. There are many components of the charge, and I want to go through those just to make sure that, that those are on the record. First of all, the proposed annual water and sewer rate increase is 9.9% for fiscal year '21 and 7.8% for fiscal year '22. We're continuing the shift to the Clean Rivers Impervious Area Charge. It began last year with 18% of those costs. In fiscal, in fiscal year '21, it will be 28%, and fiscal year '22, it'll be 37%. And so the ERU charge that we use for the Clean Rivers Impervious Area Charge will be $19.52 in fiscal year '21 and $18.40 in fiscal year '22. The water system replacement fee stays the same. The customer metering fee increases to cover customer service costs. The pilot fee, the fees that are paid to the District of Columbia, will increase per CCF. And then the, the discount for CAP customers, the Clean Rivers Impervious Area Charge discount increases from 50 to 75%, and CAP 2 is made permanent. Sorry, there's a delay on my slides. Okay, so one aspect of the, of the rate proposal is the metering fee. In 2019, it recovered about $11.6 million, and it is being increased per a recommendation from, from the cost-of-service study to recover the cost of our customer service organization. So over the next two years, as detailed in the rate proposal, this will increase. This includes the costs associated with metering and billing, customer service. So it will, it will increase to recover $15.1 million of the customer service organization in fiscal year '21, and then the full amount of $24.1 million in fiscal year '22. As I mentioned, there's a proposed withdrawal from the rate stabilization fund that comes from two sources: debt service savings that we've accumulated in the fiscal year, plus repaying a $5 million withdrawal from the rate stabilization fund in fiscal year 2020. Those amounts, that $13 million, is going to be applied over the next two years, with $2.5 million in fiscal year '21 and $10.5 million in fiscal year '22. This is how our revenues compare by customer class. This, the rate proposal in front of you-- The rate proposal in front of you, retail revenue will generate an additional $35 million for DC Water to continue the work that we've talked about this evening. We're also showing, for the record, the wholesale revenue that we receive from the Sonic Interceptor, from Loudoun County, from WSSC, and Fairfax County. All of these added together make up our total revenues that are proposed to be $733 million in fiscal year '21 and $766 million in fiscal year '22. These are the details of the various water and sewer rates, some of which depend on the amount of water customers use, and some of them are fixed and do not depend on the amount of water that customers use. There are four tiers for our retail rates, residential, less than four CCFs, residential greater than four CCFs, multifamily, non-residential. There's a single sewer rate for all of our customers. The Clean Rivers impervious area charge, as I mentioned earlier, will actually decrease over the next two years as we shift a portion of the Clean Rivers costs from the impervious area charge to the sewer volumetric rate. So it will be $19.52 in fiscal year '21 and $18.40 the following year. The customer metering fee increases in order to cover the costs of the customer service organization. The system, the DC Water system replacement fee remains the same, and then the District of Columbia fees are shown in the bottom portion of the table. So this is what it looks like on a customer bill. So an average residential customer who uses 5.42 CCFs or 4,054 gallons a month, we'll see with the combination of these charges, an increase of 6.6% for next fiscal year and 6.7% the following fiscal year. We do offer discounts for our low-income CAP customers, and I'll just point out the bottom yellow line for CAP customers who use that 5.42 CCFs, they could see their bills go down from $36.44 in the current fiscal year to $33.81. The ratemaking at DC Water is done by the Retail Rates Committee. Municipalities across the country rely on best practices to make determinations about how best to recover our costs. Our board has adopted a rate-setting strategy in 2011 that indicates that revenue sources cover the costs set by the board, that rates should yield a reliable and predictable stream of revenues, rates based on annually updated forecasts of operating and capital budgets, rates must be legally defensible based on objective criteria transparently designed, they need to be rate structures that customers can understand, and that rate increases require transparency and predictability. Again, our rates, our report is to make, to propose rates that are just and reasonable, efficient, equitable, and consistent in their application to the customer classes, and we believe that we've done that, and that our expenditures that the rate support have been discussed in the board's budget workshop in January and in various committee meetings of the board. Our most recent cost of service study was conducted by Reftalas. I mentioned earlier that in fiscal year '20, we conducted a cost of service study to align the budget proposal and the rate proposal with the cost of service study. We do cost of service studies periodically. They will be done going forward every two years. The last one was done in March 2018 by Reftalas Consultants. There have been prior cost of service studies that laid the groundwork for the rate structure that we have in place today. This year, we also brought in an independent consultant to review our rates and our rate structure. We wanted to make sure that we were employing best practices from across the country. And there were a lot of findings. Some of them are listed here. We asked the consultant to look at the rate classes. They determined that they were appropriate. We wanted to make sure the core CCF of water lifeline threshold was appropriate, and they looked and compared us with other utilities and found that it was. They believe our cost of service study was generally consistent with industry standards for ratemaking. They did have some recommendations. They recommended that we expand the metering fee to better recover our fixed costs, and that's part of the rate proposal that you have before you. They looked at the Clean Rivers impervious area charge as a basis for consent decree-related capital costs, and they believe that was appropriate, as is the way that we charge for the Clean Rivers impervious area charge in the ERU. They have asked us to look forward at some additional work on ERUs, and we have that And they also looked at the suburban cost allocation for Clean Rivers and understood the technical basis for allocating those costs. We produce a 10-year plan that produces a 10-year forecast of our revenues. We want to make sure that any action that we're taking today doesn't have a negative impact on our future. So there are several items that we do in our finances. Number one, maintaining debt service as a percentage of revenue to 33% or less, it's best practice. Maintaining combined coverage of 160%, maintaining 250 days of cash, that's something that our rating agencies have recognized to support. We're also diligent about projecting consumption. Water consumption in the District of Columbia and in cities all across the United States decreases every year as efficient, water-efficient appliances are installed. So in fiscal year '19, it declined by 1.8%. So we projected 1.5% decline for conservation for '20 and '21, and 1% in '22 and onwards. And that's built into the rate proposal. And then one of the reasons why our financial plan is as it is is because debt service in '19 was lower as compared to the budget. And so the amounts from that savings are included in the Rate Stabilization Fund deposit withdrawal, that $13 million. This is one of the outputs of the financial model. This is a projection that we make available to our customers to give them an idea of what rate increases might be over the next 10 years. Obviously, the years that are closer to today, we can see more clearly than those days that are farther out. But we view this every year, and we're proud. The orange line is last year's financial plan. The green line is this year's. And so for the next three years, what we're doing is we're proposing, well, first, we're proposing two-year rates that are less than what had previously been forecasted, and we anticipate that that will continue for fiscal year '23. This is what the average user charge equates to, given those projected increases. So for fiscal year '22, the average household charge will be $118, and will grow to $180 at fiscal year '29. We also project this information for other customers. Residential customers make up a large number of our customers, but multifamily customers and commercial customers use a lot of water. And so we started providing this information in addition to that rate calculator to help our board have an understanding of the rate increase proposals. So that concludes the presentation tonight. We will receive public comments, and we're happy that so many of you have joined us. All of those comments will be posted on the website so that the public can see the comments that are made for us. There will be a Retail Rates Committee discussion on August 25th, and we will be asking them to make a recommendation to the board on the rate adoption. That board meeting will be held on September 3rd. The October 1 rates for fiscal year '21 will be implemented October 1, 2020, and then the fiscal year '22 rates will be implemented October 1, fiscal year '21. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, as always. Are we next going to hear from our financial advisors? And if you'll introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Edward Marcus of Amok Consulting Group. And this evening is my colleague, Sean Lynn. And we would like to take the opportunity to summarize briefly the results of our independent review of the proposed revision to DC Water's rates. Our presentation spends a few minutes, a few moments, on recent performance, but then focuses primarily on the proposed changes in rates, the potential impacts of COVID-19, and the affordability of rates. And we use comparisons with other utilities in our presentation. We'd be pleased to answer any questions as we go along, either during the presentation or at the end, at the discretion of the board. We'd like to also note that this is the 11th year that we've had the pleasure of providing this review for DC Water, and it's something that we conduct for other utilities, including New York Water and other utilities. Now, Sean Lynn would like to begin the presentation, and then I'll be back a little bit later to talk about COVID-19 and other issues.
Hi. Can everyone see the slideshow okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So, slide two, provide the overview of DC Water's financial performance from 2014 to 2019. As the chart illustrates, in each year, actual cash receipts were above budget and actual expenditures were below budget. While it's not a guarantee of future results, this track record offers a degree of comfort that the expenditures and revenue estimates, including those for 2021 and 2022, are prudently developed. Now, slide three, our previous finding regarding the quality and efficiency of DC Water's performance were unchanged from the prior year. DC Water continues to meet or exceed the board's operating goals. Strong operating and capital performance helps manage the cost of providing service and mitigates risk. Slide four lists some factors that are driving the rate increase. So in short, capital and operating expenditures are increasing while long-term water use is decreasing. In addition, DC Water receives no subsidies. These are the same reasons that are driving rates up in other cities as well. Slide five. Outline some of the financial impacts of COVID-19. There are reductions in water sales, especially in, for non-residential customers. Water system in Boston, New York, and Philadelphia are also seeing increases in residential sales and decreases in non-residential water sales. In addition, there may be changes in operating expenses, and some ability of certain customers to afford their bills may be affected. So that will lead to net impact on DC Water cash flow. DC Water is effectively managing the financial impact through June 30, 2020. Slide six summarizes the proposed 2021 and 2022 rates. And as Matt has already mentioned, the proposed rates represents a continuation of the three-year phase-in shift in revenue needs from credit to store rates. The proposed rates also incorporates an increase in customer metering fees, as well as an increase in credit discount provided under the CAP program from 50% to 75%. The average monthly residential charges for 2021 and 2022 will be $110.71 and $118.11, And slide seven. The table summarizes the potential building impact of the proposed revision on average single-family residential customers, average multifamily customers, and some select non-residential customers. And the table illustrates that customers with a high ERU and low usage may see a reduction in their bills. And CAP customer will likely see a decrease in their bills in 2021 due to the increased credit discount to 75%. Slide eight. In each year, we compare DC Water rates against that of its peers. DC Water bills with and without district fees are represented by the red and green bar in the chart. As shown in the chart, DC Water charges are relatively comparable to other CSO utilities. However, unlike other utilities, DC Water receives no property tax revenue or other subsidies to reduce its user charges. Nine, we also assess affordability of DC Water user charges based on average single-family charge and median household income. Again, DC Water bills are represented by the red and green bar. It's bills as a percentage of the median household income. DC Water's store, stormwater, and district charges as a percentage of median household income are affordable at 1.46% competitive with its peers. And I'll let Ed take over on slide 10.
A few slides ago, Sean mentioned the impacts of COVID-19 on DC Water and its customers. Our next two slides address, first, the response of DC Water in terms of customer assistance, and then, second, in mitigating the financial impacts on the authority. As shown in slide 10, and as also mentioned previously by the chairman, DC Water has taken a number of steps to assist its customers, and these steps are consistent with the practices of other large and regional utilities, including steps such as suspending shut-offs, waiving late fees, and expanding in cooperation with the district assistance programs for customers. Slide 11 is a bit busy, but there's a lot to talk about, and I'll just mention a few things. COVID-19 is impacting utilities, as mentioned by Matt Brown, throughout the United States. And our discussions with utilities in Boston, Philadelphia, New York, as well as DC Water, everyone's kind of in the same boat in that revenues are being affected by significant reductions in non-residential consumption as restaurants, hotels, and other establishments are not able to open. And basically, that's going to be an impact on revenue. It's starting perhaps a little bit later than we originally envisioned. Instead of seeing the effects in March and April, it seems to be more May, June, July, but it's unfortunately not going to go away very quickly. DC Water is taking a number of steps to mitigate those impacts, including trying to reduce the actual expenses out of its operating budget, as well as reducing the actual outlays in the capital budget. In 2000, that's in 2020, it is also taking steps in 2021 to do the same thing, as well as tapping the stabilization fund and providing some dollars into the operating budget. We wish we had a crystal ball in terms of where things are headed, in terms of next year and the year after, but again, every utility is in the same situation. What we have seen with DC Water is that it's taking prudent steps consistent with the practices of other utilities to address COVID-19. uh consistent with the practices of other utilities to address COVID-19. The next couple of slides address the affordability of user charges. And as mentioned in Matt's presentation as well, too, the assistance that is provided through CAP is very significant. And this particular slide, slide 12, shows the difference between a single-family average residential bill with and without the the cap credits. The, the next slide, slide 13, compares the assistance level provided under the DC Water CAP program with peers. And we think this is very striking in that the affordability assistance that is provided by DC Water is robust, robust compared to other utilities, and really provides a meaningful impact on customer bills. Uh, Matt also discussed uh the affordability programs, the current and new initiatives, uh, including increasing the impervious area discount from 50% to 75% and making the CAP two program permanent in 2021, so I will not repeat these. But uh, again, we find that the assistance programs offered by DC Water are excellent in comparison to peers and very effective in uh assisting in reducing the customer bills. If I could move now to our conclusions, beginning on slide 16. It is our conclusions that DC Water's proposed 2021 and 2022 rates have been reasonably developed, reflect the anticipated revenue requirements of the system, adhere to board policy, and are comparable to other utilities. Uh, we always note that if water usage declines at a faster rate than the assumed rate or interest rates are higher than expected, or unforeseen major expenses are encountered, then the actual financial results could, of course, differ from the current projections. Uh, one of the things that is very significant, uh, and a significant advantage with DC Water is that the rate structure has a number of features that are not tied to consumption, and it does help to mitigate the risks of lower usage. Uh, but again, as Matt Brown pointed out, throughout the United States, uh, water consumption at large utilities is continuing to decline. And then COVID-19 is providing uh a significant uh short-term decline as well. The potential for some underspending in 2021 and 2022 and the availability of the rate stabilization fund also provides flexibility in risk mitigation uh in circumstances that may arise. Uh, the third point, COVID-19 presents significant challenges to the industry as a whole. Uh, the potential effects are subject to change, not only in this year, but in future years as well. In addition to the measures noted above, DC Water initiatives for targeting potential operating and capital savings, prioritizing capital spending, modifying the use of cash finance, construction are significant tools for addressing the potential COVID-19 impacts on revenues. And the reserve funds provide liquidity and help support strong credit ratings. Two additional points I'd like to make is that affordability is a concern in the district. It's a concern throughout the water and wastewater industry as the cost of providing service continues to increase. Uh, again, the programs, DC Water's CAP programs, the original, as well as two and three and splash, and the use of a lifeline rate as well are not only consistent with industry practices, but are progressive in providing assistance to low-income bill payers. The further increase in the impervious area charge discount will help low-income bill payers. And the district assistance to customer and DC Water initiatives in response to COVID-19 are in addition to the affordability assistance outlined above. Uh, we note again that the potential outcomes of COVID-19, as presented, are subject to change. DC Water is monitoring the effects of COVID-19 on usage and revenues closely. Uh, we have discussions with DC Water, uh, basically on a monthly basis as to how things are going and keeping an eye on things and comparing it with other utilities. But it's uh something that will require monitoring for quite an extended period of time. And again, we note that major water utilities throughout the country are experiencing similar impacts. That concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Well, thank you very much. We, um, thank you for the presentation. We will share your presentation with board members. Um, but in particular, this evening, what I want to focus on are our, our witnesses. And Ms. Manley, I may need um some assistance on how we call witnesses. Um, and I think you are my partner in this. And Ms. Manley, do you, um, can you tell me how many witnesses there are and the process of how they will be called?
Okay, we have seven witnesses that pre-registered on the list that was emailed. You don't have it in front of you. I can call the names. And once we're done with those.
Yeah, I'm gonna have you partner with me on that, Ms. Manley.
Okay.
You've all, you've also had people probably contact you to be added to the list. And so in all fairness to everyone in terms of timing, let's, um, Ms. Manley, I will have you call, help me call the witnesses.
Okay, our first witness is Fred Carney. As an individual.
Okay, Mr. Carney. Mr. Carney, if you are there, you are on mute because we cannot hear you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Uh, that's all right. We'll get used to this. Yes, we can, Fred.
Okay, greetings, uh, Mr. Chairman Wells and board members and staff of DC Water. My name is Fred D. Carney Jr. I live at 1666 Barnum Place Northeast, Washington DC 20017. I've lived here for the past 24 years. Uh, I am a native Washingtonian, and I understand that DC Water was established in 1996, the year I moved to this address. So, I am, I've lived at this address, I purchased this property at the same time DC Water was established. My experience with DC Water has been that DC Water is the meanest, nastiest, and least user-friendly utility provider I've ever known. And for that reason, I feel it should not be allowed a rate increase. Your propaganda says unless you make critical investments in the infrastructure, failure is a likely income. Well, so was my house. It needed critical investment in the infrastructure. And a few years back, in ninth, in 2018, I received a water bill for $895. I did not get a regular bill, but I got a notice of intent to access a property lien. I did not get any first, second, and third notices. That that notice to extend to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, put a lien on my house informed me that I owed properly approximately 800-plus for my water uses. And this was the first contact I had concerning this issue. The notice said that my water bill was delinquent in over 60 days. And again, I had not received any prior warning. That the full payment was due within 10 days or arrangements would be made to sell my house. Now, to take such action as to threaten to sell someone's home, to me, is the worst possible technique to collect the debt. It is a capital punishment to a homeowner. I carved a number on the bill to make arrangements on this $895 bill. And the representative told me that no arrangements could be made and that I need to check and see if there was a leak in my house. I did check. I had a contractor come and look, and certainly enough, there was a leak in several pipes inside the walls. I had to have the drywalls torn out in the basement and have the pipes replaced, multiple pipes, and just rot it because this is an old house. The bill came to about $1,500. So having to pay the contractor and pay an $800-plus water bill, I was financially challenged. I called DC Water to try to make payment arrangements in this dilemma. I sent a copy of the contractor's bill. I took pictures and I sent all this on the internet, as the customer service representative told me. Within a few days, I got a email back saying that no arrangements could be made and that I had to pay the money or my house would be put up for sale. I struggled and paid the $800-plus and made arrangements with the contractor, which took me about a year and a half. I have still not received any regular bills from DC Water. And though you say during the time of the COVID-19, you are making, you were the first utility. What was your, your advertise, your propaganda? DC Water was one of the first utilities announced that they're offering all customers flexible payment plans for the duration of the pandemic that they would not turn off water service to anyone during the pandemic. Yet, on June 1st, 2020, I got another notice of intent to access property lien in which they threatened to sell my property for a water bill of $414. For, once again, no prior bill, no prior warning. For these reasons, I think that there needs to be a complete revamping of how DC Water does business. And up until then, I do not support or recommend a rate increase. I think that I've spent my time five minutes and I'm done.
So, sir, do you currently have a billing dispute?
No, I paid my bills.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, okay. All right, next, Ms. Manley.
Okay, our next witness is Loretta Nappier.
Last name again?
Nappier, N-A-P-P-I-E-R.
Ms. Nappier, you are, if you're here, you are on mute because we cannot hear you.
Okay, I'll go on to the next one. We'll come back. Kendrick West.
Okay. Kendrick West? All right, if Kendrick West is there, you may be on mute or you're not there.
Okay, our next witness is Karen Austin.
Ms. Austin? Karen Austin, are you there? Okay, next.
Okay, next, okay, next, we'll hear from Eric Jones, Apartment and Office Building Association.
Good afternoon.
Well, let me assure you, Eric Jones is here. Mr. Jones, good to see you again. Welcome to DC Water hearing and with a word to your testimony. And I recognize that you recognize an organization, so while you're not, you don't have to take a full 10 minutes. And rarely, as you know, in front of the council, you never get 10 minutes. But I'm sure you'll be efficient and judicious with your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I am Eric J. Jones, Vice President of Government Affairs, DC Commercial, appearing on behalf of the Apartment and Office Building Association of Metropolitan Washington AOB. AOB is composed of organizations that own and or manage commercial multifamily residential properties as well as companies providing products and services to the real estate industry. Currently, the combined portfolio of AOB's membership is approximately 185 million square feet of commercial office space and 50,000 residential units in the District of Columbia, Maryland, and Virginia. Within the district, AOB members own and or manage nearly 140,000 apartment units, which comprises more than one-third of the district's private rental housing stock. They also own and manage more than 80 billion square feet of commercial space in the district, which constitutes two-thirds of the total private inventory. Rising utility costs. Before I directly address proposed rate increases, I would first like to provide a brief overview of the current economic outlook for our commercial and multifamily tenants. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, property owners and managers have seen a major decrease in the amounts of rents collected. In commercial buildings, many retail and other tenants impacted by COVID-19 are unable to pay in attempting to renegotiate leases and payment terms. As a residential market based on recent numbers from the National Multihousing Council's rent payment tracker, housing providers have seen a decrease in full and partial rental payments during every month of the pandemic. Notably, residential Class C properties have been disproportionately impacted with many experience in lower rent collection rates. Unfortunately, as we are aware, many of those residential tenants who may were able to because of the $600 in enhanced unemployment benefits provided as part of the Coronavirus Aid and Economic Security Act, or CARE Act, which expired on July 31st or last Friday. Prior to the expiration of CARE Act, one of our AOB members informed the DC Council that they expected to have to write off more than $1 million and collect the rent by the end of 2020. Compounding the impact of Congress and extending the enhanced unemployment benefits of the mandatory rent payment plans required by the district government. As you may be aware, Mayor Muriel Bowser signed an executive order declaring a public health emergency starting on March 11th of this year. The most recent order extends its declared period through at least October 9th, 2020. As part of the council's legislative response to the COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent public health emergency, the council passed legislation requiring building owners to enter into mandatory rent payment plans for commercial and multifamily tenants who have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. As part of these requirements, building owners are prevented from collecting the gross rent due during the declared public health emergency and for 30 days thereafter. This means that building owners and managers potentially will not be able to collect rent for no less than nine months from impacted tenants without the ability to charge late fees or interest. In addition, both commercial and residential building owners have been prevented from increasing the cost of rent for the duration of 2020. All while landlords have seen their operating costs increase due to enhanced mandatory cleaning requirements in compliance with CDC standards as well as increased safety and security and utility costs. As an organization, we are pleased to read the proposed F5 2021 rate increase would be less than previously projected. As an industry, we truly understand the fiscal hardship that all businesses are facing and appreciate the utility's decision to withdraw additional funding from the Rent Stabilization Fund over the next two years to help lower fees. We are, however, still concerned that rates are increasing during a time when water usage was already projected to decrease prior to the declared public health emergency. Considering the district still has not fully reopened, the average daytime population of the majority of the district continues to be down significantly as a result of the mayor's stay-at-home order. Furthermore, we have reservations due to the fact that the proposed budget numbers continue to be estimated at a 4% cost of inflation, which continue to be higher than the sum of price in debt. For these reasons, we believe that rates should be flat as opposed to increasing as, as was shared during the July 29th Business Community Town Hall meeting hosted by DC Water. In addition, I would like to briefly address two issues highlighted during our testimony during the last year's term. First, we still do not believe that DC Water has presented sufficient support, EAC shift, to soar of value metric shift, nor has DC Water explained how these to soar of value metric shift, nor has DC Water explained how these calls will not have a significant financial impact on retail sewer customers. We would ask that DC Water consider addressing these issues as part of their twenty twenty-one study. Secondly, we still continue to believe that businesses who are hit the hardest by increases in their DC Water bills are also those hit hardest by the economic downturn and decrease which has only been exacerbated by the pandemic. We truly believe that these factors are being taken, are not taken into consideration. And would like to see DC Water do more to consider these factors when creating their budget for next year. In closing, I thank you for the time, for our testimony this evening, and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Certainly, AOB is a very important partner in the District of Columbia. And a very respected organization, so thank you very much. I, I will open that up to any questions from any of our other board members. Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony and it'll be considered by the board and sent to the record. Thanks, Eric. Next, Ms. Manley.
We have a joint Capper, C A P P E R.
Okay. I can hear you.
Okay, yes, I, I'm not providing a testimony, I just have a lot of questions. My property is in northwest DC on Van Ness Street. And one, I was doing some calculations comparing a bill that I had from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty. And the, most of your presentation has been about water fees and comparisons with other districts regarding water. But what I found was that from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, there was a sixty-four percent increase in the rate of sewer charges for sewer services. So the thought of having an additional six percent increase on top of a sixty-four percent increase sounds ludicrous to me. You haven't really talked about the water, the sewer rates. There, they also are a greater part of my bills. The other thing, when you were showing your charts about comparing with other areas. Fairfax Counties were about, let's see, I made a lot of notes here, let's see if I can find it. They were something like fifty on, on the chart, I think it was a bar graph. Fairfax County was at about fifty percent and DC was at about a hundred and fifty percent. So while there were a few municipalities where the rates were higher, most of them were quite a bit lower than DC's. It, and also DC's was twice that of New York City. Which I find very questionable because I know you have raised the issue quite a bit about our old pipes, but I would suspect that the pipes are even older in New York City. And I have a question, I'm actually quite ignorant about a lot of these things. I know that you talk about replacing the lead pipes, but who, who pays for that? Does the individual homeowner or property owner pay for it? Or does DC Water pay for it?
So what I'll have to have you do is call and to, I think the number was presented earlier. But there is a, there's a program to help lead pipe replacement for customers, for our ratepayers. And there's, you know, there's a lot of things of like, how do you arrange it? And a lot of things about that, that the board's not going to necessarily know all the ins and outs about that. But the Lead Pipe Replacement Program is funded through the city. And if you call into the number that I gave earlier, and we can get that number posted again. You can get information about the Lead Pipe Replacement Program.
Well, my point is, I, I attended one of your town hall meetings virtually. And to me, the, it seemed like primarily PR and talking about all the wonderful things that DC Water does. And one of those things included replacing all the lead pipes as though you needed, you were the ones who had to pay for it. And what you're suggesting to me now is that we pay for it and maybe that the city pays for some of it. So that doesn't seem like a very sincere argument for you, part of your argument for increasing rates. Let me see, there, there was a study done in two thousand sixteen, seventeen for the U.S. Department of Energy. And they compared rates and rate increases in sixty-three localities across the U.S. And there were, out of sixty-three localities, there were only nine others that were equal to or higher than DC Water. I mean, basically, my points are, I really don't see the justification for your high rates. One other question I have, I really don't know the answer to this, is, well, two questions. One is, I know there's no oversight body other than the board. The Pepco and DC Gas both have, are, are regulated. And the DC government has quite a bit of influence over their rates. But DC Water has no oversight or regulation other than the board. And of course, we don't know who, who the board is or how they represent us as, as users of your service. So.
That's a, that's a great question. You have no input onto who the board is for Pepco, Exelon, for Washington Gas. Those are private individuals that are on their board. The board for DC Water, we have to, we're appointed by the mayor. And then we have to, there, we have to go through approval by the city council. And then our terms are up after a period of time and we're either reappointed or go through another process. So unlike Pepco or other utilities where you have no say in who their board is, our board is, it has, you know, selected by the mayor, approved by the council. And we have term limits or we have terms and then we can be reappointed. The, that's why the board sets the rates that, and you know, again, because we're, we're answerable to the political bodies.
Maybe, but the DC Water is not, whereas.
DC Water's, the board, just like Womata, just like the subway system, the, the entity is subject to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors oversees, hires and fires the general manager. And the board sets the rates, just like Womata. We're very similar to that as an independent entity carrying out a government function. But we're public, we're a public entity, we're not privately owned.
You're public, but the DC government does, has no, no say over your rates or how you function other than selecting the board members.
Very similar to Womata. It's the same type of entity.
But not to DC Gas or not to Pepco.
Those are private entities.
They're, they're utilities.
For-profit entities. So we're gonna have to move along to hear from others, but we're not a for-profit entity. The only funds that we raise are put back into DC Water. We don't have shareholders that, that make a profit off your, your bills like you do with Pepco and, and Washington Gas. So with that, we're gonna move on, but please, in terms of, if you have any questions around lead pipe replacement, we're happy to help you with that. And with that, Ms. Manley, let's move on to the next witness.
Next, we have Grace Soderberg, representing the Office of People's Council.
Okay, Grace, you are currently on mute, but welcome. And we appreciate the Office of People's Council and welcome. And you have at least ten minutes.
Okay, thank you, Chair Wells. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So, good evening, Chair Wells, members of the Board of Directors, stakeholders, and members of the viewing public. I am Grace Soderberg, Assistant People's Counsel at the Office of the People's Council for the District of Columbia. I am appearing on behalf of the People's Council, Sandra Madavu Frye. Also appearing with me is Robert Rosenkotter, the Managing Partner with Sage Management Consultants, and David Bondal, the Lead Consultant with Sage. The People's Council and Deputy People's Counsel Karen Sistrunk are joining us in the audience of this virtual public hearing. We thank you for the opportunity to appear for you this evening on this important matter. The purpose of my testimony is to offer OPC's comments in response to the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking regarding the proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and the amendment to the rules for the Customer Assistance Programs. This oral testimony is a summary of the key points from the written comments that OPC is recalling in this proceeding. OPC has been a steadfast advocate as the statutory representative of District of Columbia ratepayers and consumers of natural gas, electric, and local telephone service for many decades. With the passage of the DC Water Consumer Protection Amendment Act of twenty eighteen, OPC is the statutory representative of District of Columbia ratepayers in proceedings related to products, services, and rates over water and sewer products of the District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority. OPC's primary mission in all matters pertaining to utility services and rates, including water, is to zealously advocate for the provision of safe, reliable, and high-quality utility services for all District of Columbia consumers at equitable and affordable rates. OPC has worked to ensure that district residents in all eight wards have access to clean, affordable, and reliable water services. Our mandate to protect and assist district water customers is especially relevant in the midst of the COVID nineteen pandemic. As a result of OPC's advocacy for greater transparency in DC Water's ratemaking process, DC Water now posts material supporting its proposed rate adjustment on its website. Certainly, this is an important initial step towards improving the transparency of DC Water's rate setting process. In addition, the DC Water Consumer Protection Amendment Act of twenty eighteen states that DC Water shall provide OPC access to any accounts, books, papers, and documents considered necessary to carry out OPC's functions under the act. Accordingly, OPC reviewed the publicly available materials on DC Water's website and asked questions of DC Water regarding their cost of service study and other data inputs that affect rates. Based on our careful review of the proposal and DC Water's responses to our questions, OPC provides the following recommendations on behalf of DC Water consumers. Number one, DC Water should take a measured approach in its pending rate adjustment to reflect the negative economic impacts and financial uncertainty resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Number two, the NOPR proposals must meet the long-established just and reasonable legal standard for public utility rates. Number three, the FY twenty twenty-two rate proposal should be postponed until after the FY twenty twenty-two financial planning process concludes in twenty twenty-one. Number four, DC Water should establish additional lifeline tiers similar to the water lifeline tier for residential customers. Number five, DC Water should change the actual combined debt service coverage ratios from one point seven five for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and one point seven one for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to a debt service coverage ratio of one point six or less. And finally, the enhancements to the cap programs are a positive development to assist low and middle-income consumers. All of these points will be covered in OPC's written comments. But in the interest of time, I will be discussing only some of these points this evening. DC Water should take a measured approach to its pending adjustment of rates to reflect and account for the negative economic impacts on DC Water customers and the overall financial uncertainty resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic. As reflected in the current state of both the national and local district economies. While the ultimate death and duration of the economic crisis is unknown, the initial impact of the economic crisis has been severe, resulting in closed businesses, disruption to the economy, and millions unemployed, many of whom are struggling to meet basic needs such as buying food and medicine, paying for shelter, and paying for vital utility services. The end of the COVID nineteen public health emergency, however defined, will not result in the immediate end of the economic crisis for DC Water consumers. In the district, its residents have experienced the loss of employment and corresponding income, consequently decreasing the amount of household income available to pay for utility services. At the same time, the consumption of water has increased due to the number of residents staying home. In addition, a large number of businesses are also impacted, putting into question their ability to return to full operations, if at all. Therefore, both residential and commercial customers must face difficulty paying for essential water services. As you know, access to water and sewer service is essential for health, safety, and welfare of all people, especially during this unparalleled crisis. It is against this economic and financial backdrop that OPC presents its recommendations. The FY twenty twenty-two rate proposal should be postponed until after the FY twenty twenty-two financial planning process concludes in twenty twenty-one. While the NOPR includes proposals for twenty, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it is based on incomplete information. The budget process for FY twenty twenty-two, for the rate adjustment for twenty twenty-two has just begun. In a response to OPC's questions about the projected twenty twenty-two budget, DC Water responded that it will begin the development of its FY twenty twenty-two proposed budget in the summer of twenty twenty and will conclude with a DC Board adoption in the winter of twenty twenty-one. In addition, the budget process addresses only a portion of the development of the total revenue requirement and resulting rates cover those costs. Other components, such as financial policy decisions and revenue offsets, that will have a substantial impact on the total revenue requirement are developed, are developed in multiple decision-making processes throughout the year. Indeed, the cost of service study recommends that DC Water revisit budget escalation estimates annually as part of its financial planning process due to the commodity-intensive nature of the water and sewer industry. For the above reasons, FY twenty twenty-two rate proposal should be postponed until twenty twenty-one. This will provide a much more accurate and complete information on the actual revenue requirement for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Also, this will allow the public and OPC to participate more fully in the processes that develop and affect the twenty twenty-two revenue requirement. Public input can only be meaningful when all stakeholders work from the same basic set of facts, data, and analyses. Finally, postponing the FY twenty twenty-two rate proposal is prudent in light of the current economic environment. Should the projected FY twenty twenty-two rates prove to be higher than necessary, customers will be paying higher rates during a challenging economic period. DC Water should change the actual combined debt service coverage ratios to a debt service coverage ratio of six, one point six or less. As per the cost of service study, DC Water's debt service coverage is one point seven five for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and is one point seven one for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. In the same cost of service study, it noted that DC management set a debt service coverage ratio of one point six. Using the one point six ratio will result in lowering the revenue requirement and in turn lowering the average customer's bills. The office notes that its recommendation is at the higher range of reasonable debt service coverage ratios. For example, while OPC is recommending a ratio of one point six, there is a basis for additional savings to residential customers by using a debt service ratio of one point four as per a DC Board policy or a debt service ratio of one point two as prescribed by the DC Water Master Indenture of Trust. In conclusion, OPC presents these recommendations in furtherance of our common goal of ensuring reasonable rates and tangible benefits to all DC Water ratepayers and consumers. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present OPC. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present OPC's testimony this evening.
Thank you very much. As always, from the Office of People's Council, we greatly appreciate your, um, partnership with us. Ms. Manley, next.
Mr. Chairman, there are no other witnesses that signed up through email or by phone on tonight.
Is there any, um, so there's no others that came in later? Okay, over the transom. All right, um, are there any comments from the board members that have joined us this evening that would like to say anything? All right, hearing none. Let me say that, um, first to the witnesses, thank you very much for participating in this process. And I know that, um, we have board members, some that are probably a little bit more sensitive to individual, um, residential rate pairs and some that are more, um, representative or more aware of and have background for commercial properties and such, and that it's, the board is fairly well-balanced in that way and we greatly appreciate the, um, the input, but also all rates and any rate increase is, um, really taken with a lot of consideration thought and has to be defended, um, very well and strongly by DC Water and our staff. Um, the presentation from Matt Brown and also from our consultants should be available, not just to our board members, obviously, but to all the public and that you can go over those even further. Let me also say that, um, in my experience on the board, this is one of the, the best managed, um, entities in the region. You don't have to look much further than the Silver Spring, um, public transit, not to make light of our, our misfortunes of our neighbors, but major capital projects are difficult. Whether you're putting a metro out to Dulles Airport with, um, you know, catastrophes along the way that, uh, my experience on the board has been that our projects, um, especially the Clean Water Project and the other projects that are undertaken by DC Water are on budget and on time. I've not seen one go over budget since I've been on the board. And so I'm, I think in comparison to some other entities, and again, not to, to, um, unduly use the, the misfortunes of other, um, entities. I'm very proud that DC Water is not only, um, able to be on budget on time, but also in our experience in general, they go, are, want to assure everyone that the, um, the, the staff of DC Water go through a very rigorous process of questioning every fee and every rate increase by the board and trying to justify that. This is a particularly difficult time because of the, the commercial challenges and economic challenges that are here due to the pandemic and the loss of revenue for the city and also will impact DC Water. That's why it was important for the outside consultants to, um, look at other entities to try to help tell the public and the board, um, whether we're about to blow a budget, whether we're underfunded and can we continue to provide the services that we provide at the rate that we do? Let me also again say that, um, we, we sometimes do have to, to shave funds off of the public infrastructure, but we cannot afford to allow our sewers to collapse, our sewers to not work. We cannot allow for clean water to not be delivered. And, um, so it's a balance. And so with that, let me, um, invite the General Manager. Do you have any final, um, comments before we close out? And I want to thank you for the public meetings you've been having and hopefully, uh, not just this hearing, but the impact you, or feedback you've been getting through the meetings. Also, you were recently at a city council hearing where you heard from the council, the public witnesses at the council, that you've received a lot of public, um, feedback on the job that we're doing along with, um, the cost of that. David?
General, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to, to give some closing comments. Um, you know, first of all, I want to thank each and every witness for their, uh, for their time, uh, this evening for, uh, coming out. Uh, we, we love to hear feedback. Uh, that's the only way that you get better, uh, not as a, as an organization is to, is to take that feedback and, and process it and see if there's anything that you can do to get better with it. So we do appreciate each of the witnesses. We also especially appreciate the, uh, the people, the Office of the People's Council, uh, and, and, and their statement, uh, as well. We do appreciate the partnership that we have. Uh, and as I, uh, and we, and last but not least, we do appreciate our board. Our board holds us, uh, accountable every single day. Uh, and we, and we hold ourselves accountable as well. As I spoke to earlier, uh, when I, when I talked about here at DC Water, our culture and, and, and looking at how we get things done on a, on a day-to-day basis, uh, is one in which we are very proud of and we, we, we work in that collaborative, uh, way. And also, we, we also work with our customers. Uh, I will say to any customer that does have an issue, uh, Chairman Wells has, has given you the number. Uh, I will say we are, we, we want people to call us. We want our customers to call us. We are not turning water off. We're turning water on. Uh, if there is an issue, we want to help you. If you want to set up, uh, a plan, we will help you. Uh, I will say that we also are not leaning properties, uh, any longer. We, we do not sell properties. I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that. First of all, we do not sell properties. Uh, we, we, when we put a lien on a property, we are placed in line in case that home does sell. But we are not currently leaning any properties, uh, from the DC Water standpoint. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that and, and that we did change, uh, that aspect of our, of our daily business. But we do want to work with all of our customers and we do care. We understand that what we have before us today in COVID nineteen is a very, very serious issue uh, for, for all of our customers and we do want to work, uh, with all of them as well. Uh, the, the rate increase is very important to us here at DC Water. I think Chairman Wells, you explained, you explained it very, very well, uh, that we are a not-for-profit. Uh, we, we use the dollars, uh, for all the projects that we have and that we feel that we need to execute in order to, to keep the system going. And that is, that is our, our big key piece is that we continue to discharge the highest quality of water, uh, uh, back out into the river and that we also, uh, at that point in time, also give the highest quality of water to our customers to consume bay uh, or in whatever, whatever way they would like to use the water. And we only do that, uh, by not having uninterrupted, uh, services and also uh, quality of water being the highest that it can be. So, you know, I would say, uh, Chairman Wells, we appreciate the opportunity, uh, to serve here in, in DC and we will continue to serve and provide our, and provide every one of our customers uh, the service that, that they, uh, that they, uh, that they, that they deserve as well. Uh, you know, as I, as I spoke to as well, and again, I just want to make sure because the first, uh, witness talked about the liens, I just want to make sure that everyone does know that liens are on hold during COVID. And so, uh, we are, we are stepping back and taking that off the table as far, as far as that goes. And we are also still turning people on and we're not turning people off. So we do feel that we have been very, uh, very cooperative during, uh, during COVID. And, uh, uh, we do thank our, our ratepayers though, uh, for, for working with us on a day-to-day basis. That concludes my closing remarks. Chairman Wells, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, David. I also wanted to just commend DC Water. We just went through a very, um, you know, through a storm after a long period of high heat. And want to note the, you know, the millions, millions of gallons of sewage that was diverted from the Anacostia River, the tunnel project. Congratulations. Then also, um, one of the first times ever, this much rain in Bloomingdale, you know, did not flood. And again, these investments make a difference to our residents that can't continually to afford to, um, clean and repair their homes from things like internal flooding. And the investment of DC Water to, um, put in that, the tunnel for Bloomingdale, um, has made an incredible difference for that community. And so, um, we're tested by storms and events like this, but I'm glad to see DC Water continually to not only get stronger and able to handle them, but to protect our residents. So thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, and, um, and everybody be safe.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.